All right, it's 1:33 PM. We are back on our recess for the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners midterm budget public hearings. And the 1:30 to 2 o'clock section of the hearing today is related to transportation, environment, and land use, specifically community planning and economic development department and public works department. So we're reconvening to hear public comments to accept and consider related to the 2024-25 midterm budget amendment. Our hearing remains open. Summer Miller, Budget and Fiscal Manager, will present information on these two topics to the board and any additional information requested by the board. After this section, we will then go to public comment, and each person will have four minutes to testify or ask a set of series of questions, which then can be addressed by the appropriate officer or department representative. Time permitting, two minutes of follow-up will be allowed. Time may not be given to another person. We'll go to people in the room and then online. And when you are called, state your name and area of the county in which you reside for the record. So with that, we'll go back to Summer.
Good afternoon. Thank you. Summer Miller, Budget and Fiscal Manager. This portion is relevant to transportation, environment, and land use, which includes public works and community planning and economic development. Public Works, Jennifer Walker is the Director. Public Works encompasses roads and transportation, solid waste, noxious weeds, utilities, parks and trails, and storm and surface water. The midterm request in this particular packet is funding for the Kellogg Drive Northeast Culvert temporary repair. In 2024, Public Works had 218.42 FTEs, and in 2025, 218.35 FTEs. The general fund budget is $906,938. Total funds, $83,499,455. In 2025, $993,468 is general fund, and $85,896,297 is the total fund. Community Planning and Economic Development, Ashley Arai is the Director. CPED encompasses land use regulations, development, and construction permits, compliance with federal permits for stormwater standards, WSU Extension Services, and the county fair. In 2024 and 2025, we, CPED, I'm sorry, had 67 total FTEs. General fund is $6,330,925. Total funds, $15,245,149. In 2025, general fund was $6,230,981, and total funds is $15,785,834.
Questions for Summer from those two departments?
No questions from me.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Then we'll go to public comment. Mr. Pettit, I know you're here for that.
Two of my favorite departments. And when I say that, I really do mean that. I'm John Pettit. I'm from Rich Road. So questions. Well, it's going to kind of follow a little bit of a combination here because I do have a couple of public comments. Once again, I am always opposed to road levy shifts. You're all familiar with that. Color of money, if it's for roads, it should be used for roads, especially since it's in the unincorporated area, and our roads have continued to decline vastly. And I would like to, the question which I'm probably going to throw out here is in terms of how many miles are we, I mean, are there currently under the main county road system for the unincorporated that the public works cares for? How many miles are you able to cover and actually serve and maintain on an annual basis in relative terms to what would be an appropriate level of amount of area that we need to cover? And there is, because I believe that when people think of public works, typically we're thinking about our roads. And I happen to live on one of those, and it's great, it's wonderful. But of course, I know public works also reaches out into stormwater and oversees that department, which you'll be dealing with, and which brings another particular issue at hand. I believe that, personal belief, I could be wrong. Tell me all about it if you can. Stormwater is divided into basically two sections, even though it's one label and one source of revenue, a portion of it, which is to actually maintain the stormwater system, is pretty much all located within public works, from what I understand. But then there's another, I think it's like 11 employees that are located over in CPED for stormwater. So this question is going to be to perhaps both of you. One is, is those 11 employees are located in CPED area, they're not actually in public works, I think they're CPED, but are they actually doing storm and surface water work 100% with their man-hours? Or are they just being placed over there and then doing the work for CPED department? Now, the second part to the issues that I have is going to be kind of a question over here and a comment to the board. And it's going to take me one second to read here. 2023, the board, and mind you, I want to see Ashley succeed in her position. I have more hope for her to succeed, but she has a big hill to climb. In 2023, it was noted that there was a backlog of 4,510 permit applications. Not her fault, preceded her, but it also suggested with the study that was done was there'd be a total need of about 30-some additional employees to get caught up. Well, if we need more employees for CPED to get caught up, these permit applicants, they've all paid into the process to get delivered a service. Is Thurston County going to want to, this is back to you, Ashley, are they going to want to help and serve these people and get these permits dealt with? Or are we just going to want to take the money and tell them, well, sorry, we'll get to you maybe? So my time is up for asking the first round.
Public Works.
For the record, Jennifer Walker, Public Works Director. First question, the number of miles that we're responsible for maintaining. We have a little over 1,030 center line miles that we're responsible for. In terms of the, what we would need to cover annually, I think I disagree that our roads are maybe in the condition that Mr. Pettit noted. I would say that every dollar that we can use to maintain the roads that we have, we welcome. I think that when we can do lower-cost maintenance treatments on the road versus a complete rebuild, it saves us money. So I don't know if you have any follow-up questions on that?
Might be related to his question, but if you, if money was not an issue, there was just unlimited money, how many miles a year would you, just for the normal schedule, would you, would you have to chip seal or whatnot?
We have estimated, at this point, it becomes resources, so resources is money is one of them, but people are the other, so that's another issue that we have right now. But I would say we've estimated 100 miles, and that's 100 miles of chip seal, crack sealing, overlay, a combined of that 100 miles a year.
In a perfect world, you'd be able to do 100 miles a year of various types of treatments.
Correct.
And we're usually at 40 or 50 or something like that, seems like.
Yes.
Okay. I'm sorry, go ahead. Were there other questions? Anything else?
The other question had to do with stormwater.
Oh, yeah, stormwater.
Which is not for me to respond to. I don't believe it, but that's Ashley.
All right, then we'll go to CPED.
Good afternoon. Ashley Arai, Director of Community Plan and Economic Development. We do have members of our team who are funded through the Stormwater Fund, and they are all there to support the NPDS permit. That's the National Pollution Discharge Elimination System permit that the county maintains.
And that's 100% of what they do?
It is, the funding is tied to specific work tasks, so it's not necessarily person or tied to people as much as it is making sure that all of those funds go to specifically support the NPDS permit and fulfillment of the permit requirements.
Anything else you wanted to respond to?
No, other than we are continually making progress on our permit backlog and always looking for opportunities to make sure we're streamlining that process.
Okay, thank you. There's no one else in the room. There's no one on Zoom. Mr. Pettit, you have two minutes of follow-up.
Okay. Follow-up question for Ashley. Are you aware at this point of how many backlog permits we are? Backlog meaning beyond six months from the time that they were applied for? And is there a particular plan or methodology that can help advance us to get past all that backlog with the required additional man-hours that it would require? Do you need more staff to deal with those? I guess that's kind of the focus point of what I got. And I think, Jennifer, I think he asked, answered the other question. We're only doing like about 40 miles a year on the average, you know, for actual service, when we should probably be doing 100. And perhaps if we weren't putting $5 million over into the general fund out of the, out of the road fund, mind you, it's not a direct transfer, it's a transfer of the levy burden, but nonetheless, it's still money that we don't have available for doing our roads. And notable, the one other part about the unincorporated is currently they also are the only ones who are actually contributing towards payment out of a $50 million bond. So that's an extra comment I'm making because it's only tied to REIT for payment. So unincorporated pays the full cost of wanting to pay that, which is inappropriate, as I've stood and said many times. So that's enough for that.
Ashley Arai again. We do, I do not currently have those numbers. I could get those numbers. But I do know that everything is going through our workflow process, and we are keeping track in preparation for all the SB 1590 implementations.
I think that was, maybe it's more staff than needed. It was a question about in order to address the backlog problem.
We are fully staffed in CPED, and so we are making, like I said, continual progress to any, anything that's been submitted.
Thank you. Anything else from CPED or Public Works? Nope. Hearing nothing? Anything from the board before we recess this piece of the hearing? Okay, we are in recess until 2 PM, at which point we will pick up with Health and Human Services, which includes Public Health and Social Services and Emergency Services. Thank you. With the next chunk of the 2024-25 midterm budget public hearing, this section relates to Health and Human Services, specifically PHSS, Public Health and Social Services Department and Emergency Services. And so we will, as we've done with the other pieces, we will have Summer Miller, our Budget and Fiscal Manager, present some basic information on each of the budgets, and then answer any questions from the board. At that point, we will open into public comment, and each wishing to testify will have four minutes to comment and/or ask questions that could be responded to by an officer or department representative after your testimony is complete. So we'll call the folks in person, then we'll call anyone online. Time may not be given to another person. When you are called on, please state your name and area of the county in which you reside for the record. So with that, we will go straight to Summer for the overview. Thank you.
Hello, thank you. Okay, so this section is relevant to Health and Human Services, which encompasses Public Health and Social Services as well as Emergency Services. Public Health and Social Services, Dr. Jen Freihite is the Director, and they are responsible for community health, disease control and prevention, environmental health, social services, vital services, Board of Health, and Lake Management Districts. In 2024, Public Health and Social Services In 2024, Public Health and Social Services had 175.22 FTEs. And in 2025, did I state that right? 2024 is 175.22. And 2025, 177.23 FTEs. General Funds in 2024 is $251,819. Total Funds 77,760,642. And 2025, General Funds is $546,301. And Total Funds is $78,566,462. Moving to Emergency Services, Ben Miller Todd is the Director. And Emergency Services supports Medic One Services and Emergency Management. Midterm requests are to change the delivery date of the Medic One unit. Medic One supplies and equipment for advanced and basic life support. The fiscal year 2022 Homeland Security Grant, fiscal year 2021 Homeland Security Grant, Extreme Weather Response Grant, the fiscal year 2024 Homeland Security Grant, and the Geological Survey Gauges. In both 2024 and 2025, they had a 21.5 FTE count. General Funds in 2024 was $2,504,944. Total Funds 25,612,636. 2025, General Funds was $2,271,902, with total funds at $27,46,902.
Any questions for Summer? Hearing none, thank you. For the public comment? Pettit, anything?
I think they're both doing a great job. I will say this, because I know Emergency Services previously provided for, kind of like the sheriff provided for something. When we needed to get some extra funds, they reached out to the community, presented a levy to be voted on. The community supported it, whether it be a levy lid lift or a different tax, which is actually a really good way because a lot of that factors that seems to be boggling the county. You guys aren't going to ever get a property taxing increase significant unless you go to the people, maybe copy what Emergency Services, or I should say Medic One did. Good job. Thank you for helping take care of us. Sorry, no questions.
Okay.
I, I do have one question I could ask, but I'm not sure who, who to address this to. Public Health, oftentimes, and I'm just going to grab a number. We're on contract number 14 from the state, and X number of dollars have come in. And it's, it seems like it's been that way forever that I can remember incrementally. But it's, it's not like it's a known amount every time. And so how, how do we figure that in for like, okay, we know about '24 because that's in the past. How do we know how much money is going to come in, in '25, in those incremental increases? And I don't, I mean, I just used the number 14. I don't even know where we're at. We might be at 12 or 13. What are we at now?
23.
Oh, we're at 23 now, okay. So how does, how does, how do we figure that? How, how do you figure that out? You just take a wild guess at it? You make it work?
Question for the Public Health Director.
Hello, Dr. Jen Fryhite, new Director of Public Health and Social Services. Most of that funding is pretty stable. So yes, things get altered and changed, and that's why there's always amendments. Every once in a while, there is a new, you know, we have this, the state will have this extra funding stream, and they'll add that on, which we can kind of guess that at this point, but most of it is pretty stable.
Thank you. Okay. Quite a few folks online, they, a lot of them are Public Health staff, but is there anyone who's here to provide public comment who's on Zoom?
All staff.
All staff, okay. Then that's it. We're done with that piece. So we will be in recess. Piece is at 3 o'clock, but we're going to have a separate public hearing at 2:45 related to Water and Sewer General Facility Fees and Charges. So that'll happen at 2:45, and then we'll pick up with this continuing public hearing on the budget at 3:00 PM, which will be revenue to support the 2024-25 midterm budget. So this hearing is in recess until 3:00. We will be back at 2:45.